Good evening. I am the president of the United States of America. I'm here to lead the order. Welcome, members of the community. For watching and seeing.
There's no chance.
So it's not up to them.
No.
Let us begin tonight. I'd like to lead you to the slide of the United States of America. To follow this change. Commission on the level. Is there more to this agenda? Paul and Linda. Discussion. All in favor of UPK agenda? Motion is here. The first report to me will be from my point. And then school here, let's hear your school here.
Thank you, Mrs. Collier. Before we begin with this presentation, just ask and take a moment and observe a moment of silence. Our district and our community suffered a great loss yesterday with the tragic passing of one of our students. So out of respect for the child and their family, just ask that we just take one minute and observe a moment of silence. Thank you. So obviously, it's never an easy thing to lose someone such an unexpected event. I would say we have contacted the family. School district has been phenomenal. Like to commend our administrative team and our mental health team for the support that they've extended. And we do extend our personal thoughts to that family. So with that being said, just let you know if word I keep you aside, anything that comes up from the family with respect to their needs. But I did have contact with the father and Mr. Matthews, been in contact with parents as well. So they're very appreciative of the outreach in the community and they're certainly grieving at this point in time. So keep posted if there's anything else that comes out of it. So thank you for that. With the end year information that we're going to share to you, if you want to keep going into the slide, just want to highlight some of the things that we've been focused on for the past couple of years. There's obviously a lot of data that we could digest and get into. We'd be here forever, but I want to talk about the focus on literacy and numeracy. And then show you the pattern as we go through pre-K, 3A, 3D. And then talk a little bit about the progress that we've seen. And then in some cases, a little bit of aggression and then the need for more academic standards. So I'm going to go through this. Please don't hesitate to stop and ask me questions. This is something that, you know, typically night and night we do together, but it's fallen to me this year. So please interrupt and ask questions that will. And if I can't give you the answer tonight, I will certainly get back to you. This data on the screen right now is talking about our UPK program. So you'll know we're very excited to share this with you. It's been a focal point for us. They have early intervention. It's a targeted area. We believe that if students come in school with a literature-rich environment, their chances of success are increased significantly. So as you see on the screen there, the dark blue in comparison to the light blue. You know, our students are performing fairly well. Seventy, eighty percent of them are at or above the national norm with respect to both literacy and numeracy. And that's measured through both the PRAVANCE observational check as well as our foundations program. Which foundations is primarily based in early phonemic awareness, letter identification, and sounds. So that's been something that's pretty good. With the PRAVANCE, it's more of a personal recognition because the students know their names, their age, can identify colors, really well memory of letters and numbers. So that's something that we're pretty proud of. This past year, you know, we implemented a pre-PK program. Please to say that we were offering pre-K program services to eighteen three-year-olds. And then right now, at the start of August, we have approximately fifty students slated for our four-year-old program. So between the AM and PM class for three-year-olds, we're completely full. We have lottery system to back up. And then we are getting close to the point where we may have to split and offer a fourth section of four-year-old pre-K program. So we're pretty pleased with that progress. Thank you. We don't have any of our students there. We're currently servicing our North Royal School Kit students in our current program and out. We've seen some tremendous success with that. And you'll remember at the end of the year, we had tenant and Sadie, two of our four-year-old pre-K students reading to us. So our target was to have our kindergartners, Tina, if you go to the next reading, our kindergartners reading by December of kindergarten. And last year, we had four UPK students that were ready for level one reading materials going into kindergarten. So we're pretty pleased with that progress. So with the kindergarten, I'd like to focus on, you know, the rate of improvement here and looking at how our students are starting to do in terms of their early literacy and their early numeracy. And, you know, last year, it was quite an adjustment for our earliest learners to come into pre-K and have to attend the COVID protocols. And then this year, you know, we still had COVID protocols in place. So the progress from pre-K to kindergarten, it shows that our numbers are healthy. It shows that we're doing well in comparison to the national norm. But it certainly identifies an early trend with numeracy that we need to focus in on that math. And I think as we go through the rest of the presentation, you're going to start to see that that is an area of concern for us and it's something that we will be targeting. But when it comes down to their early literacy skills, again, lettering fluency or sound fluency are truly areas that we assess during our benchmark periods, which are in the winter and then the spring for kindergarten. And then the early numeracy, it comes down to the number reading fluency. And then the quantitative total fluency as well as basic concept applications. So overall, we're pretty pleased with that as our spring data is showing some encouraging progress. That, you know, in comparison to their words correct per minute fluency, the national norm will be about forty-six words correct per minute under the A12 model. And our kindergartners, or excuse me, letters correct and words correct is about fifty-nine. Tina, if you want to keep going. This piece here, the first grade data, a little bit of repression in comparison to previous totals. You know, as far as the winter and this spring, that could be developmentally due to the increase in rigor and content and form concepts starting to be introduced to them. We didn't see a little bit of regression, but again, in comparison to the national norms, we're pretty pleased with what we're doing. And if you think about it, for these students here, their first two years that are academics were certainly impacted by the COVID virus. Tina. When you get to second grade, this is where we start to see more complex math problems. That number comparison try-in, where the students have to work at three numbers, identify magnitude in comparison, and identify which is greater, which is less than, and really start working on that mental computation fluency. So that starts to show a little bit more of a challenge for our students. But that's something that, again, we would expect that. And it's something that right now isn't overly concerning, but it is something that's going ahead. And, you know, going to start identifying that we may need to start exploring our comprehensive math program in the near future. Tina. Third grade, really worth for concepts start to come in. New learning is in its infancy. You know, it's the first time that things that are new to our students aren't easily accessible to them in their community. You start to learn about local concepts and the big picture. This is one of the things where we talk about our academic progress when it comes down to vocabulary, reading comprehension, oral fluency. Again, we're not quite where we need to be when it comes down to our particular standard for North Royal School Kit. But in comparison to the national norm, we think we're doing very well. One area that I would say to you, we want to continue to strive for through the collaborative classroom process is making sure that our reading fluency and our oral reading fluency and our comprehension are addressed. The oral reading fluency, because fluency is the gateway to comprehension. We know the more fluid a student is when they're reading, the more likely they are to grasp concepts. You know, our goal would be to increase the authenticity. Feel like that going to significantly increase their chances as concepts become more and more difficult. This is really where we start to identify the critical thinkers and problem solvers. Tina. Are there any questions at this point? Okay, and again, our year-to-year comparison for fourth grade, we saw some modest means. But the point, I guess, that we want to focus on is they are A's. So we'll take them and in comparison to the national norm, we're doing fairly well in terms of helping. As you go on through the academic career, you know, our benchmark hits ninety percent and eighty-five being the mastery with ninety percent of our students having academic success being our target. But there's a lot to be proud of at the elementary level. So if you think about our pre-K to fourth grade program and you look at those bar graphs, a lot of them are moving in the right direction. So we'll take those modest means. Tina. So in a general summary, and I know I've thrown a lot at you. I won't read everything from the bullet points, but, you know, we know we need to continue high-quality tier-one instruction, which is the classroom teaching. We know that there is no substitute for high-quality instruction with respect to offering our students the best possible opportunity for the academic success. That really comes in every teacher, every day delivering the best possible instruction that our students can receive. We're talking a lot about the intervention team and the model and making sure that our MTSs process is periodic and it's measured. It's not something that we test the state, but we're trying the academic support so that we're going to continue to progress, monitor our students. And one way we can do that is through the use of the SIPS program, which is systematic instruction and phonological awareness, phonics and sight words. That program is geared towards a routine approach to phonological awareness, sight words, spelling. And that's really the start of intensive intervention. And the phonological awareness that we're talking about is the ability to hear, identify, manipulate sounds and spoken words. So example of this would be when students are able to identify a line and then splitting syllables. So as they go throughout the elementary school, if that fluency isn't there, this is one way to encourage it to serve. We do have resource-rich environment when it comes down to our interventionist, as well as our specialized teachers pushing in and offering great support. But if you think about the model, and we'll talk a little bit about this as we go through fifth and sixth grade, our tier approach is basically a pyramid. You know, tier one, it's for everyone. Tier two is for some of our students. Tier three, in an ideal state, would be for fewer students. So that we're really starting to close the gap. And we're really making sure we're very intentional when we get to those highest level interventions. Questions? Paul?
We were talking about math. It looks like the community, like many other schools.
Yeah, I think from the concepts and the automaticity with numeracy, it is there. I think as we go throughout, we're going to start to see some of the things that we're talking about. And with collaborative classroom, I believe that we're adding into our third year full implementation field. Our staff is starting to see the benefits of that structure and identifying them. We have a okay math program. They're starting to supplement it more. And as soon as you start to supplement, that's when, you know, inconsistency starts to happen. You know, I think that that's one of those pieces where we always want our individual teachers to put their thumbprint on stuff. But we want the same basic core principles taught every classroom because that's who's going through the system. You know, we want to make sure they have consistent experiences. But Tina, keep going. I think you'll start to see with some of this stuff as we get into the intermediate elementary grades. So again, you know, similar to fourth grade and high school, fifth grade. I think as we go from middle school data, you're going to see this is somewhat attractive, especially in the literacy area. They haven't had a full-blown implementation of collaborative classroom yet. I know that the teachers have started, but it certainly hasn't been as intense in terms of the professional development as it was at the elementary school. I believe we're starting to get there now. I believe with some coaching and some more support and more professional development here toward that linear approach, we're going to be in good shape. But this is really where you start to see the math fall off. And I think as you get into the high school data, you'll start to see, you know, the deficit from appropriate. John?
Question about the bar graphs are at least significantly different. In other words, is the math that is basically... I mean, they look pretty much alike, one or two difference in grade. So we change these bars a lot.
Right.
So is this significant that you see little tiny fluctuations in the bar? Maybe you can't answer that.
I don't know if I'll be able to answer that in an articulate fashion because these are such a snapshot assessment. I think what we're really starting to see is when it comes down to the rigor Monday through Friday, that there's a growing concern, you know. And I think that that's something where our teachers are identifying that. And that's something that with Megan's guidance and the administrators working with the teachers, you know, we know we need to do a better job of coming up with a more comprehensive approach to math. You know, so with respect to the sampling, I don't know if I could say it's a significant difference, but I know as we get upwards into, you know, algebra, geometry, and algebra two, the basic math concepts and the math competency in terms of stamina and the ability to differentiate what's happening through, you know, automatic recall isn't there. You know, and we're trying to identify that due to, you know, some of the in-depth reading issues for complex word problems and due to, you know, just the lack of number fluency. There could be a variety of things, but I know the one piece that's brought to me consistently is that we continue to supplement our math program. And as I said, you know, we are so dependent upon supplemental materials. We're just not certain that everybody's implementing the same without. That's a concern. You know, so I want Jason and everyone else at the table to have the same experiences. So if he and Shelley have very different teachers, one's very skilled at teaching math and one isn't, there's a lot of factors that will impact both of them moving forward. You know, either the teachers not teaching at the appropriate rate for Shelley and, you know, Jason's getting more in-depth intervention or Jason's not getting the same experiences. And, you know, Shelley could be more, for example, choosing their names to their closest to my left. But I think that that's what we're starting to see from our program. And again, this also starts to make sense to us when we talk about putting our curriculum in the atlas and now starting to see where our trends are. So Tina, if you want to keep going. You know, sixth grade, the same type of thing, modest means. You know, you start to see a little bit there toward the spring time. And again, I don't have any scientific data or anything in depth to suggest why, you know, we're starting to see a little bit of regression in the spring. But I can tell you with certainty what they've experienced over the last few years due to the pause, due to the interrupted instruction, due to, you know, just general fatigue and some of the social emotional stuff that's been lacking empathy in academics. You know, there was a little bit of a challenge for our teachers to keep our students in the game and keep them progressing along the appropriate pathway. So I think that that's also something that we're starting to see. So Tina, if you keep going. So in general, you know, you're going to see some consistency in terms of the tier-one instruction to make sure that's happening. You know, we're looking intently at our coaching model and then at our support system. But I also would say to you, at the middle school level, we need to have a very clear focus with our MTSs process. And we need to do a better job of funneling kids in and out of there on a regular basis. And know that that's been made clear to our staff. And I think that with respect to continuing to have a very particular agenda and again, looking at measuring students' performance and trying interventions and being very calculated with how we come back, that's something that our team is definitely intent on focusing on and making sure that we're utilizing the support systems and the cat sleazy. So I know Ms. Robb and Mr. Hassel will be working with their departments and making sure that our interventionists are being utilized in a very similar way to what the elementary did last year, which was the team and teams model to make sure that students have the appropriate support to place direct head instruction. Okay, Tina, if you want to keep going. This, you know, you see a little, a slight regression in reading. Percent of proficiency is not nearly where we need to be. And I think that if you look at the screen on the right, again, to me, fifty percent were below that fifty percent threshold in the springtime when it comes to math. You know, and again, we're comparing to the national norms and the data because they're our standard for North Royal School Kit students we hired. And we got to say to ourselves, if we're hovering around that forty to forty-five percent, we're not quite where we need to be. And again, going back to consistency, I don't know that this is a lack of effort and I don't know it's a lack of initiative. In fact, I would say to you, this is an indicator that those early program efficiencies are starting to catch our students when they get into those middle school years. And I don't think it's for lack of interest on part of our teachers or lack of effort. I really believe that's a program efficiency. Tina. This is where we start to see some of our students that are accelerating. You know, they're starting to earn high school credit in the grade. You know, I think that the conversation about our accelerated learners is something that we all benefit from. Those numbers there, especially when it comes down to literacy, of being above, on average, or above eighty percent of the national norm, that's kind of what I would love to see all our bar graphs alike. It's an indicator of, you know, we're trying to get those students college and career-ready and making sure they have some progress in their math. Obviously, it's a little bit below, but better than our data for seventh grade. And again, not to compare actors to actors. But if we go to the next slide, this is a piece where when we start thinking about, you know, that tier-one stuff that we've been talking about, if you start to look at that high-quality instruction, what we saw in the fall, a little bit less than what we saw in the spring. There's some academic themes there that is celebrated. But again, there's a lot of stuff going on in terms of the curriculum development, the professional development and the effort that teachers are putting in Monday through Friday. And that's what this indicates versus what their samplings through the fall, spring, or fall, winter, and spring benchmarks show. So that just gives you a little bit about what's happening in the classroom on a regular basis. So again, Tina, next slide will show very consistent, you know, the use of SIPS here. Tier-one instruction, foundational piece. And then again, I've already said, we really need to do a better job with MTSs in the middle school building. I think we have some teeth that sink in our... We have data that sink our teeth into, I believe, you're going to see next week when you start to hear about school improvement plans, that there are some very targeted and intentional areas that we will start to address. And our professional development plan will reflect those areas. Okay? Paul?
Fourth floor on the top. They present in the kitchen, correct term with their competition status, that's for teachers. That, I think honestly, that really comes down to routines and procedures. So when I get to the high school, I'll speak a little bit about that particular bullet. There were a lot of interruptions last year at the middle school level with students coming in the class late. And, you know, anytime a teacher has to stop to start over again, you see that payoff, you know. And there's no reason for that. I won't shy away from our mission. I think it's important to put that out there. But in terms of routines and procedures and consistent expectation, you know, if students come to school, it's like bringing your hard hat and your lunchbox, we need to get to work, you know. And that didn't happen. So I think with reflecting on the particulars of the school leadership team, the MTSs team and the district or the board administration better are all working in concert to start addressing those concerns because far too many interruptions took place and then impacted instruction in a negative way. Okay, thank you for that. So as we go through the high school, I'm going to go through it at a little greater clip. And I want you to look at our incoming freshman class. And as you see, there's a little bit of, you know, a high beginning review of content. Get activated with the building, expectation procedures. Second quarter, we start to see, okay, doing all right. Third quarter, there's a depth there in particular in yelling, or quarterly rebound. Now, this stuff here goes back to what I said, we're taking care of this this Monday through Friday. We're taking care of our tier-one. There's no reason why our score shouldn't be consistently across the board in the eighty, eighty-five percent range. And again, that's a general statement. I know that we have to differentiate instruction and we have to take care of particular students' needs. But I think with the quality of teachers that we have at the high school and the effort that they're putting forth, there is no reason why our students can't consistently be at that eighty-five percent across the board. But again, you know, we'll discount a little bit of that to COVID. Discount a little bit due to, you know, some interruptions to instruction, whether it was due to COVID protocols, whether it was due to the student being sick and having a quarantine or things of that nature. But we can only use that excuse in twenty twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two. And in the fall, we have to move forward with the plan and say, okay, we got to minimize that because we do have this library, we do have consistent expectations. For the most part, we have a lot of the same people coming back. Tina, keep going. This one here is cause for concern. As you start to go through the academic scope, we shouldn't see anything remotely close to the fifty-two, fifty-four percent range, especially when it comes down to English language errors. You know, but again, there are some things, I know there's school leadership teams working on that. I know there are MTSs teams looking at that. And I know that their approach to some work is that individual instruction, but also...
uh, individual instruction points, but also students that are struggling, you know. So that, that is an area that we want to continue to focus on in this scenario. Um, that if we don't move with judgment, you know, in English eleven, where the state comes in and measures basic proficiency, I think we could be hit with a, a pretty big academic count. Okay, Tina, keep going. No progress there. Again, consistency across the board. Social studies numbers seem to do fairly well across the area. Um, you know, but again. Humanities, ELA, and social studies seem to go hand in hand. And there's no reason why there should be such a discrepancy. You know, because we're applying the same critical thinking skills, the same letters and skills, same writing skills, same speaking skills across the board. Um, so I do feel like that's something that Mr. Brad and Mr. Sheppard have to continue to target with their team. Um, and start identifying some potential areas of solution for, um, their school improvement plan. Yes, sir.
Uh, quarter four, is that included by the exam or the exclusive?
This one, I honestly, Jay, did you guys include the quarter or the final exam in this? Or is it recent? Okay, so it's the end. I know the region's data that's coming up in the end. But they did change up the percentage as well this year, which was good. And because in the past, we had four quarters and the final exam all counting the same. So as you go through, we look at our senior class. Oh, I think we're not.
There's some questions where we can, uh, find the, the moment.
Yes, we can give that for you for next week's workshop. So obviously, this, I think you're gonna not be surprised by because of a great graduation rate that we have. This is something where again, you know, if we think about hook ending our students, um, started to squeeze like a vice. We, we see our academic progress from our seniors. Um, this is Merrick, her team. They played a vital role. I think the group collectively really started to narrow in scope on our senior class, um, in January and really started to target those students that were at risk for not graduating. And I believe, you know, the results will be clear on that. My, my concern is, I'm gonna, Tina, go to slide down. That, the conclusion, you bypassed that one. Keep going. Right there. So when we start talking about conclusions, and I'll go back to that other slide in just a second. My concern is if you look at the single digit mastery rate, the mastery is measured by eighty-five or above. And you look at our passing rate. And this is something that, you know, it's not a surprise to Mr. Brad or Mr. Sheppard because I talked to them about this at the end of the year. My concern is the discrepancy between the quarterly data and the region's data. And I, I really want to start focusing in on our academic stamina. And I really want to start talking about our, our rigor Monday through Friday. And the fact that again, this will be our second year in a row where we know we need to put time and energy in the high quality form of assessment. Because there is no way, in my opinion, there should be such a large discrepancy between the quarterly data and the passing rate. Either we're not doing a great job of being aligned to standards with our former assessments. Or we're not doing a great job in terms of, um, objective rating. You know, so subjectivity starts to play a part in the quarterly reporting. And if that's the case, it doesn't benefit anybody. You know, so when we start to see that fifty-six percent, sixty-three percent, everything like that. I can expect, you know, there should be alignment to the quarterly data. Now, I know this is the first time in a few years that a full battery of region assessments have been offered. And I get that the students haven't had to sit in an academic setting and take a standardized test twice in times. But there shouldn't be that much of a discrepancy. And the stamina should be clear because truth be told, the standards we have in North River Hookett should be higher than what the state has for our students. Questions or comments?
Just a question under the false rating, certainly including special appeals. What was special appeal?
So the, the, the state allows you to appeal a region score that's uh, between sixty and sixty-four. If you've shown that you've been in AIS, that you've worked on, um, efficiency, you sat at a class full time. So that's something that they've offered up. In the past, it used to be a two-point discrepancy. And over the last several years, they've gone through and said, you know, you could have seen a region's uh, diploma under an appeal process. That's what that indicates. So we put that up there because again, not shying away from our blush, that means to met the minimum efficiency of the sixty-five or above. It means that they appealed if they qualified. And some of those cases, again. You know, the students not having that. So we've encouraged them to take every possible assessment that they can. And to their credit, they did. So I, I think that that's, that's something that happens across the state. But we don't want to put out a miscommunication and say our passing rate relative to one, for example, was seventy-nine percent. Because it wasn't, you know, it was fifty-six percent. But in terms of students who receive the credit roll over one under the appeal. Our number went up to seventy-nine percent. And that's something that everybody across the state entitled to do. If they meet certain criteria. Then answer it. Okay, so Tina, if you want to go back to the high school summary. I think this is the critical component here. And this is in a number that's on your screen, but one of the things that we started to do was identify trend data, um, through observation. And then we started to really dig into it and hear whatnot. There were three thousand eight hundred fifty-seven incidents targeting us at the high school last year. So when you start going back to Paul's point about the bulleted points. You know, if you think about that, three thousand eight hundred fifty-seven incidents targeting. That's a lot. That's way too much. There were ninety-six students that had had more on excuse targets. That's, that's too much. That's a quarter. Those starting, that, that's starting to be looked at, um, through a change in our core conduct. Um, that is a process that you're gonna hear about on the twenty-fifth. There will be some more teeth to our core conduct and there will be a tighter policy or excuse me, tighter practice around the targeting. Um, because every time a student comes into class late. They're taking away from the teacher's time, taking away from their classmate's time. And oftentimes, it's a two to three minute interruption. And if that happened three thousand eight hundred fifty-seven times. You can imagine the teachers aren't getting through the curriculum nearly at the level that they would expect they should. So that's something I want you to think about. You think about the targeting as coupled with the attendance issues that are compounding these factors. And then also the fact that there were a number of children that had to quarantine last year because of the Department of Health Guide. That plays a significant role in that academic progress. Um, so I want you to understand, very proud of our staff and very proud of the time and effort that they put in. Um, I won't shy away from saying our standard is our standard. But I'm very happy with the staff that we have working with our students. But there are some behaviors that we need to correct in a big way. Um, that's at the middle school and then at the high school level. You know, I know kids at the high school level, myself, being one included, did not like the ride to school bus. But ninety-nine percent of the time, that thing yellow school wasn't on time. And when, when it's not, there's a reason why. And everybody on that school bus that's late is coming in with the same excuse. Um, but they're not coming in late three thousand eight hundred fifty-seven times. Right? If they were, we'd be talking to Mr. Lawrence and saying, Jeremy, we've got a problem. So, um, that whole time representation will be in front of you in August, the twenty-fifth. Um, again, keep going Tina, pressing through. This is the end result that we're all striving for. Ninety-three point nine percent of our students, uh, graduating. That's something that again, you recall prior to my arrival, we were at eighty percent. And we said that wasn't acceptable. So we're almost there. You know, our goal is to consistently measure within the ninety percent range or better. Um, my goal ideally would be a hundred percent of our students have their needs met and graduate. So if we don't have these challenging conversations and we don't start learning that area where we can make improvements. Um, we just say, hey, this is great, ninety-three percent, high tides all around. Um, that would be one thing, but then I wouldn't be employed very long. So I think that that's something, again, I want you to understand, we're really proud of where we're going. Very proud of, um, every, every hour that we're putting in to benchmark our students. We're making significant gain. Um, and that's something that we should be really excited with. But we've got some work to do. Any questions overall or comments, concern, short stories? Yes, sir.
I was impressed with the elementary data. In the respect that one of the little market center says that percent of students scoring after above in that law. Uh, almost every one of them, although the bar graph goes up and down, it's between this. If you look at the lines, it's seven, sixty percent where we're close to, so we're above fifty percent.
Yeah.
Which means a lot when you're talking nationally. And my, my question is, when you think, uh, means what? Do the, okay, let's say I, I take it that's a fourth grader. Does the fifth grade teacher, I don't know the, the recording is what, do they get these strengths and weaknesses of those students?
They do, they do. And so when, when we started a couple of years ago. When we placed students, um, we placed them in an anonymous fashion so that we can't have, again, subjectivity for overloading one class versus another. There is a, a discussion about the student's performance model. There's data to accompany that. Uh, it's very authentic. There, the coaches are involved. There's a team that's assembled on a conference waiting room. And they have a chance to dialogue, um, the first couple of days you start school. Just to dig into that data and see. Um, and you'll recall, we really started monitoring our progress at the elementary level against the national norm. They were doing age web testing for a while, but we came up with the North River Hookett standard in comparison to age web because again, we want to know our children. And we want to hold ourselves to higher standards. So if age web was usually forty-six words correct per minute for the national standard. You know, we're creating our North River standard and our number like eighty-five six. And also our goal would be to always hit our standard. And this will be, this upcoming school year will be our third year of collecting that type of data. So we'll really start to look in and see, was our number too much? Was our number too little? Was our number just right? And we'll make some adjustments to standardizing that. The age web data and the age web standard will change, but we need to look at our internal process to see are we, we hitting our mark? And again, we have great support. We have instructional coaches. You know, we have a very good literacy program. Um, but we always want to make sure we're taking a comprehensive look to ensure that that's happening. And, and again, when we think about the collaborative classroom. It's important for us to implement those programs with fidelity. The individual teacher leaves a thumbprint on the program. It leaves a thumbprint on the students. The consistency in terms of what's delivered is critical. You can't have two kids walking out of the same hall with very traumatic experiences. Because that promotes a gap and it takes a long time to close that gap. And so we're starting to see that. And that's why I said earlier, we, we consider a little cool year. Probably hoping that elementary and high, you start to really close the gap and use a vice pick approach. I, I think we're gonna be, in fact, that we're really gonna be in short order. I know that's a long-winded answer, but you've got me to look at it and go on.
So. So maybe, so.
We are. Yep, we, we, I think you're gonna see, um, this is McLean. Sarah will be presenting some of that because we know that we did not have the processes in place pre-page as well. So yes. I think you'll see some of that work starting at the earliest next week in school improvement plan and department plans. Yeah. Any other question? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Uh, really appreciate the, uh, the review of last year. Um, I truly appreciate your honesty and many short calls um, that I've heard. Certainly do, uh, I'm happy with, with what you did accomplish. Uh, and, um, I, I really, uh, I really appreciate that you're looking at really in depth of how, what, again, how to, uh, what costs and short calls that there are and, uh, great try to come about. So thank you.
Thank you.
Next, uh, agenda is, uh, the board member appoint, appointments. Um, you do have these in your UPM book. It's, uh, sheets on page three and I'm going to just, um, verbalize the incentive to become part of, um, the board members for the year. This week coming here, the board education building, the exams will be um, Linda Baker at the elementary school. Paul Statsky at the middle school. Tina Lee at the high school. And Jason Sloan at the alternative learning center. The four county, um, uh, liaison group will be Linda Baker. Uh, and both the, uh, board directors and the legislative committee. And I am the house committee of the, uh, just a committee that, that is. Um, the district safety committee, Jason Sloan is a representative there. Uh, and then we have board standing committees, the policy committee. Uh, is Paul Statsky chairperson and Sheldon Kupman team. The audit committee is Jonathan Obrer, chairperson, Sheldon Kupman and Linda Baker. The building and ground, habitat project and energy program committee is Jason Sloan, chairperson, Sheldon Kupman, Paul Statsky. Uh, and personnel and associations are Tina Lee chairperson, Jonathan Obrer and Jason Sloan. The, this is incorrect in our report, Tina. Uh, the board panel committee is now in the faculty committee. It has become one of our standing committees.
Okay, I will fix that.
Okay, so, um, we should add that to the standing committees. And the board panel committee, chairperson is Susan Corder, the members Jason Sloan and Tina Lee. And I believe that completes, uh, board representatives of the inside of the year. At this time, um, does any request will probably have to be for Tina?
If anyone sign up?
Thank you, Eric.
There are, thank you. We move now to the consent agenda. Uh, motion please to approve the consent agenda, agenda, Tina Reed and Jason Sloan. Um, are there any questions or discussions, concerns? John?
Uh, I'd like to discuss for now.
What? I'm sorry?
I discuss it for now. Uh, I'd like to look at E.
You want, which one, John?
E.
E?
E doesn't, excellent.
A, B, C, D, E, approval combined scores. Um, if we'd like to discuss it and we will vote that from the consent agenda to deal with after the consent agenda. All right. Um, board members, uh, will approve of, um, just by consent, uh, given the proof when that, uh, I think the motion I think just needed for. Okay, we will call it. So E is not part of the consent agenda. E is the approval combined scores. Any other questions, concerns? About consent agenda? Then all of you approving the consent agenda is it's status minus E of the group's sports, combined sports, all in favor? Motion is here. At this time, we will then address E as a separate entity. Um, so turn to page two of your agenda, approval of its combined scores. In order to discuss it, please keep it on the floor. All in, I mean, motion and second. Uh, Shelley and Jason? All right, all discussion. John?
Uh, I have nothing to praise for. Our, our school is accepting other kids from Red Creek or Solos or whatever. I think it's a great idea. The more involved it supports, the better. I mean, it's a student body is. My problem is not with the idea of combining. It's what it does to our ranking, our classification.
Our what?
Our classification in such a time.
Oh.
It's, we can't do anything about it, but I wondered if we can settle, however, we can make a, I'm upset by the fact that we combine with a other district. And that raises our enrollment so that we're at higher ranking, not a ranking, but a higher classification in schools. And therefore, it's, it's not fair. Uh, we're up against schools that are much bigger than ours because they had the male student body combined. Is there something we can write to section five or commissioner of section five later? Is there something proactive we could do or mostly should do to change the rules for the classification of schools? I know where the people are doing, Williamson does, so is Louisiana. It's, it's, it's so widespread now that the old rules, I don't think, hold. But they're not really, I don't know, I can't say that. They're not changing the rules to make it realistic to modern society.
If, if you'd like, Mark, that's a topic that's been discussed recently. I know last week I received a phone call. So it's something that if you want to give us a chance, we can report back to you on the twenty-fifth and give you some updates on that. I think there's a couple of other topics of discussion with this particular arena though. Um, but I, I know that we're not the only school district exploring that same question and or concern.
Thank you.
I also have a, uh, maybe Shelley, can you pull your consent rank with the tie shirt? I just, we don't pick up too far, okay? So I, like John, I mean, I want all kids and all schools to participate in sports. Extra curriculums are so important to us. With that said, my wonder is, is this because we cannot feel our team? Or is it because Red Creek cannot fulfill their team? Because I do know for the JV, June, the Barson Sackler, they definitely have. My concern is if our students, uh, can't participate and, you know, are not feeling that a very part of their team, that will persuade them to come out to stay. I believe that my responsibility to our academy that they would believe it's their job. Child, not participating, but they were all students. So I, again, I support all of this with a can't ask. It's because we can't fulfill our.
Casey? I can appreciate what you're saying, but in years past, we, we've gotten a need with school districts to provide our students with opportunities. Uh, I remember, like, here at Happy Road, our, our cheer team on the Solos, we didn't have students there at the order. We were paying for them to have policies. So I think we have to reciprocate that those types of situations because, you know, those students, although they're in a need with the school district, um, I think we have the responsibility to give all students with that opportunity. It's part of our community. I, I one hundred percent see where you're coming from of that. But we've been, we've seen, um, decreased participation in sports and, and a lot of other activities over the last six to eight years. And we're, if it continues, we're going to be in that position where we're going to have to be not really in their solos. So I, I would hate to see us put ourselves in a position where people in school say, yeah, I don't think we're going to do that. Um.
And, and I agree with that. But yeah, I think you kind of know. So because my concern for the JV students, I would not persuade them to want to participate in the game. It's a long, it's a long chapter, isn't it? That I'm a freshman in high school. I think that has to play, Red Creek doesn't need us anymore. I don't have a single goal for a year of that long to be part of my, our team. So I think it is, I want to be generous to all students in the main district. Um, but I just would want to look at the numbers first. And I think.
I think in terms of the twenty-fifth, we can present a package to you that will speak to those concerns as well as the concerns um, that John brought up in terms of that and the numbers viability. Ironically enough, Mark, I would talk about this very thing today, um, when we assessed our modified numbers. Because, you know, last year we were in a position where we were offering two modified basketball teams for both gendered boys and girls, right? So it's something where, you know, to, to your point, we, we are always looking to have what's best, what's in the best interest of both districts. It's got to be mutually beneficial. It can't come with a negative consequence. Um, you know, I don't know that there's one particular answer that will give us a clear, definite yes or no. We sent a, a young lady over to our line, she, she, like, so it is. Uh, she finished, I believe, in, in a top twenty-five with the state, you know, sectional champion. So that's something that took us about a year to get off the ground once we were solicited. So it's merged the basketball, um, Red Creek, baseball. So the opportunities are there. Um, the competition is there. We're certainly looking to try and build our leader program to the point where we're not dependent upon anybody. Um, that is our long-term goal. But I also know that there have been some people who have solicited Mr. Blankenburg about sending students from neighboring districts, even outside of section. So we're currently in section five at interest from section three school district. Um, send Mark some communications about what we consider combining for this or what we consider combining for that. Um, I think what, it would be in our best interest to give you the particular numbers. Um, we know that we're, we're working with Red Creek to provide those opportunities and then make sure that, you know, every student's being taken care of. Um, but we're also looking at conversations about exploring opportunities that don't currently exist in North River. You know, people have solicited. We gather, consider sending some of our, our favorite kids to a neighboring district for football. You know, we've got some pretty big boys out there that, you know, do very well on the wrestling mats. And they're, they're always soliciting because they don't chase that round ball around too well. Um, but I mean, I think your points are, like, make sure that we're, we're taking care of North River. Certainly that we're cognizant of opportunities for neighboring district, um, and, and doing something that's mutually beneficial. I believe we can do that during that twenty-fifth.
All right, I think that's a good idea. Uh, board, just a second. Um, I, I'd like to halt our discussion at this point and table this motion for until the twenty-fifth. And when we can have some, a presentation and the data.
The only, the only caveat, the only caveat that I want to give you, and I may end up asking if I can communicate to you all in a newsletter because all stores are public twenty-second. You know, that's, so that means that our students would miss four days, student athletes would miss four days of preseason. Um, that, that's the only thing I'm wanting to consider is that, you know. But it's something that I definitely can get you the numbers on, but you have to recall with a changing season, preseason's been greatly reduced. So competitions start that vertically for school.
My intent was not to force all of us, I was much in favor of voting on it because of the, the kids we're starting, they need to start the season. My intent was, how do we get section five or New York State to change the rules? In other words, we are supposed to represent the community. And all I see sometimes is the, the end result coming from the coaches and from school. Somehow or another, there is some entity that is in charge of rules about classification. And they need to know that people that listen and were concerned about the, it's antiquated, the rules of classification. So I think we should vote on this tonight. I don't think anyone had any problem with it. I don't have a problem with this. I have a problem with section five or maybe the other sections as well. Having this arbitrary rule that was made when we had doubling populations in schools. We don't have that anymore. And therefore, we're scrambling for filling the teams worthwhile activities. And I think the section five, I mean, maybe the other sections are behind on those things, on those kinds of theories and policies.
Okay, well, there is a motion on the floor. Um, and then just a second, we are going to have a vote. On the motion unless the board, uh, moves to table this total term. That's, that's a choice.
I'm quite willing to take that. I think the leaning comes. I do know for a fact that the boys, June, and Barson have a lot of students. Red Creek has, has many students. I do not want to protect our students. And the reason I feel so passionate about this is actually because of my brain cells. But it is really because when I look at, um, the coaching and how they cultivate students to want to play, I have seen this year, this summer, um, coaches cultivated to be able to play. And they're playing. And I want them to feel like they can still play. Um, it is so important for that to be a reason, and it's a hundred percent that I'm talking. So that's why I feel like I need more information to get, oh, yes, that is, I want to help the team to play regardless of where it's pretty poor. But I think that I also want to look at this.
So do you want to make a motion then to table? Yes.
So just to clear my mind. What numbers would you have seen in order to agree to that? You know, we're not talking about numbers when it comes to, um, extra curriculum activity, talking about people. And, you know, with the mental health crisis in this country, I think it's, I think it would be shameful for any of us to choose not to allow neighboring district students to participate in sports. And please don't take this personally, because I'm not a tool, but to take neighboring school students, um, out of theater that somebody might have to work with to, to make a team or work to get playing time. Our flag and all coming from the middle school basketball team, right outside those doors in the seventh period. Um, it was one of the best things that ever happened. I learned to work hard. So I think helping, um, help the, uh, competition with good things. And I think that among other things, it's going to be friendships. I mean, one good friendship out of a, out of a combined sports team far outweighs the negative to my, my less weight. So I, I, I completely understand where you're coming from. I would want to put our filter in. But with Waytown's population, we are going to be like all other way down in schools. We don't have any enrollment. We've lost, you know, fifty percent of our total, um, enrollment in twenty-five years. And it might be a little bit overfitting. It's not, it's not trending the other direction. So we're going to be there sooner or later. And we're going to be leaning on somebody. I fully don't want them to say, no, our student.
Okay, let me make things clear. If, if you want to table, there must be a motion and a second, and the board will vote on whether to table or not. If the board votes to table, it will be tabled. If the board votes not to table, we will proceed with a vote to approve the, the resolution and, and for this point. Thank you. Okay? So Shelley, you're making a motion to table until the twenty-fifth, until the point. Uh, is there a second? Here you can have a second, then we will proceed with the vote. So all in favor of approving the resolution for combined sports? Raise your hand. All not in favor of approving the combined sports? Thank you. There are no extensions. The motion is six tomorrow. It probably would be valuable, however, to address the questions that were brought up tonight. So everyone does have, uh, information on how this does impact our district. That only for speaking to approve section five. And possibly, uh, we should, and perhaps then figure out something that we can all do, uh, to express our, uh, feelings about this for section five. Okay. That takes us to page thirteen. Number six. Um, a motion please to approve the revision of resolution. For March ten, twenty twenty-two, for installation of roofed flat mountain and wood at the high school. Motion please. Paul and Tina? Discussion? Carrie, now all in favor of, I mean, all in two, mine, sorry, yeah. One, two.
Tina?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Shelley?
Yeah.
Linda?
Yes.
Tina?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Thank you, Martha and Carrie.
I would like to ask the board to please bring your handbooks with the. I would like to ask the board to, uh, please bring your handbooks with the new pages, you know. To the, uh, retreat, we will be doing our, and, um, we look forward to seeing everyone on Monday for our retreat and, uh, and the work that can be done with that. That concludes our agenda. Um, motion please to adjourn, Jason and John. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.